I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 6, 2023, to order at this time. And we will start with Ms. Sharon Griffin, our county manager, providing the invocation.
Thank you and good morning, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Father, we pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I can please stand as our Assistant County Manager Ben Warren leads us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge our elected officials with us this morning. As always, our Sheriff Chris Thomas, we appreciate him coming and being here. And also, we'll recognize our former Board Chairman for the Board of Education, Bob Williams, joining us this morning as well. We ask that everyone in attendance to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board will offer the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. First, we need a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Phil, move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? We're good. Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions or concerns? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. That moves us right into item three, public comment. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster, today for public comment. We have one citizen signed up. I would remind everyone, you have exactly five minutes when you sign up for a public comment. We ask that you address the Board as a whole and not any one particular Commissioner, and keep your language professional. We also ask that you not use this time to promote a political candidate or a business. I would also remind everyone, particularly this morning, because I'm having a hard time reading the name, please repeat your name and address when you come to the microphone. Our one citizen signed up this morning is, I believe, Christine Hattie, 119 Doe Drive in Hubert.
Hi, good morning. My name is Christine Halatki. Sorry. My name is Christine. I'm the President of Possum Wood Acres Wildlife Sanctuary located in Hubert. Recently, the USDA has implemented a policy change that requires wildlife facilities to have a perimeter fence. I am here to request that some of the funds for the upcoming fiscal year be used to install this fence. Without this, we will be shut down. We have made many attempts to receive donations of fencing and applied for grants to cover this, but have had no luck. The small grants we currently do receive all goes towards wildlife treatment and operating the facility that currently rehabilitates over 3,000 wildlife a year. That includes endangered species. Currently, as of today, we have 600 more wildlife intakes compared to last year. This past year, we also struggled with dealing with an avian flu outbreak, which our facility assisted in mitigating while working with the NC, North Carolina Wildlife Commission biologist. Our facility is not only focused on rehabilitating and releasing wildlife, but we focus on community education and health as well. Some of our current programs include holistic falconry therapy for individuals who suffer from PTSD, literacy, and art programs. We are one of the few organizations that allow individuals requiring community service for nonviolent crimes to come out and work with us as well. We have at-risk students who suffer from developmental and adjustment disorders, who come out from Onslow County schools to our facility every week to gain education and problem-solving skills. One of those students recently won the Onslow County Golden Rule Light Keeper Award. Without the installation of this fence, there would be a significant impact to not just our ecosystem, but the members of the community as well. I do have apologies, I only printed six, but attached is the quote, our brochure, and the information for the fence, the policy, if you'd like.
Mr. Warren is coming up.
Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes our public comment period for today.
Standing, so we'll move to item four with presentations. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, we're very pleased today to welcome two department heads for the County Department Spotlight to present what their departments do for the organization and the community. First, we have our wonderful Communications Director, Mr. Kevin Riepel.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. I'm very excited for the opportunity to speak before you today about some of the great things that Onslow County Communications is doing here in Onslow County. Just a little bit of background about our division, we're under administration and we are a staff of two, myself and Tiffany Kana, who's our media specialist. We do a lot of the traditional media releases and social media stuff that you would associate with Communications Division, but we also do a lot more creative kind of things as well. So one of the things we've done recently is we've refreshed the Onslow County NC.gov homepage. We've got a new design, we've rolled out some new colors and new fonts, a little bit of a branding refresh, and we have a newsflash area that we're very excited about that features all sorts of activities and events that we try to keep up to date on the homepage as well. We also do a lot of the social media management for Onslow County. We work with the different departments. We manage mostly the Onslow County government social media, but we look at what all the other social media accounts are doing for all the other departments, and we try to share and incorporate some of their posts. So we really want to recognize the employees of Onslow County, share the successes that all these other departments are showing on social media. Right now, you may see us very often at different events. We're doing a lot of photography and videography. We're trying to build an archive of photos that we can draw on, so when we need to put together some flyers or a marketing video, or maybe even incorporate some of these images into the upcoming budget book, we'll have a great archive to draw on to some beautiful images of Onslow County. Another place you might see some of these beautiful images is in this building. You may have noticed some large window murals that we've been installing lately. Just down the hallway here, there's a large tractor for the Cooperative Extension Office on the third floor. There's some great photography there. We've been doing all the photography for those images. We'll design and print the different layouts and install them ourselves, which is kind of a cool thing. So we all know that Onslow County is a beautiful place to live, and we wanted to take some of that beauty and bring it into the building here and share that it's also a beautiful place to work, too. We work closely with some of the other departments to make great events even greater. So for the inaugural Black History Celebration earlier this year, we worked with the Parks and Recreation Department. We did the lighting, the video, the sound system, even the stage decorations to really sort of make that event a lot more impactful. We also worked with them earlier this year for the Senior Games opening ceremonies. We just brought a lot of music and some banners. We wanted to make it feel like a more Olympic-style opening ceremonies event, so that it was just a more fun event for the participants. Right now, we're in the planning stages of the Public Safety Memorial Observance, which is something that we do annually. Another thing that we do quite often is Onslow County Today, the monthly news magazine show with Lisa Whitman-Grice. That's been going strong for 23 years now, and so it's really an Onslow County institution. We're trying to build a bigger audience for it, so we recently rolled out the Onslow County Today podcast. So maybe you don't have time to listen to an hour show on YouTube, you know, when you're at home, but if you're in the car, you can listen to these interviews that Lisa is doing with all these different Onslow County employees, department heads, and all sorts of people talking about what's happening here in Onslow County. So I think her long-form interview-style format really lends itself well to the podcast format, so we're excited to build an audience there. A couple other cool things that we did with Lisa Whitman-Grice and the museum, we had like an interactive quiz show-style exhibit that sort of unveiled some of the artifacts that were in their collections. We did a virtual tour of the museum's collection where we flew a drone through the collections area, and that was an exhibit that kind of gave visitors a bird's-eye view of what it was like back there. Most recently, we had a dinosaur sort of bust through the walls of the museum as part of their summer prehistoric exhibit. And it's those creative things that we really excel at, where a department comes to us and says, hey, do you have any ideas for this? And then we can sort of get our creative juices flowing. We still also dabble in some of those statutory-style communications, you know, legal placements and those kinds of stuff, but we really enjoy getting to explore the more creative side of things. Probably the most important thing we do is we record and live broadcast these meetings, which is very exciting because there's 12 microphones and six cameras, and we, you know, there's video screens everywhere, and we put it all together and put the graphics over top of it, and then we send it out live to G10 TV and to the Facebook audience. So we really appreciate you supporting what we do. We're excited to continue to build the Onslow County brand, to grow the audience that we have, and to tell the story about what the great employees here are doing for Onslow County citizens. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Our next Department Spotlight will be our wonderful Public Health Director, Chrissy Richmond Hoover.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to share some information about what the Health Department does for Onslow County. As you know, North Carolina has a decentralized public health system, meaning that counties are responsible for implementing those public health services that are outlined by the state in statutes. The Onslow County Health Department was established in January of 1941 as a result of that gigantic population increase that came along with the establishment of Camp Lejeune. The services that we provide over the past 82 years have evolved to meet the needs of our citizens, but some things have remained unchanged in that at its core, we seek to preserve and protect health in the county. The Health Department has 113 employees that combine to offer about 780 years of public health experience to the community and provides a wide array of services to our community. For example, all Onslow County birth and death certificates pass through the Deputy Registrar. This Deputy Registrar also issues permits for interstate and international transport of decedents and assist in preparing records for child fatality and overdose fatality review committees. In the past fiscal year, the Deputy Registrar processed over 4,000 records. The Environmental Health Division conducts inspections and issues permits for a variety of settings, including food establishments, lodging, and institutions, public pools, childcare facilities, private drinking water wells, as well as septic systems. There are about 1,400 facilities that are active for inspections at any time in Onslow County, and Environmental Health performed about 6,200 inspections the past fiscal year. Our Community Relations Team strives to promote healthy habits and lifestyles throughout Onslow County. This team is responsible for offering evidence-based programming to our community on topics such as nutrition, physical activity, vaping prevention, and diabetes prevention. This section also engages various stakeholders in the community in conducting the triennial Community Health Needs Assessment, annual state-of-the-county health reports, and various community-wide public health preparedness plans. They also spearhead the agency's accreditation and quality improvement programs. The Community Relations Team reached 1.87 million individuals last year through their social media health promotion messaging. WIC and Nutrition Services, they provide supplemental food packages and nutrition education, breastfeeding support, and healthcare referrals to low-income pregnant and postpartum women, infants, and childrens up to age five who are at nutritional risk. WIC delivers targeted nutrition interventions and recognizes the importance of ensuring consistent access to nutritious foods during this important time of development. Currently, there are about 7,700 individuals on WIC, and the WIC program adds $5.8 million in food redemption benefits to the economy in the past fiscal year. The Health Department's clinical services, clinical support, and care management includes a staff of about 57. That's where the majority of our services live. These services are clinical, laboratory, and care management, and they offered over 18,000 visits last fiscal year. These services include women's health, physical exams, breast and cervical screenings, access to birth control, as well as prenatal care services. Our care management services focus on high-risk pregnancies and at-risk children. We offer postpartum and newborn home visits. Child health includes well physicals and immunizations. These immunizations could be the routine childhood shots required for school, could also be annual immunizations like flu, but also international travel immunizations. All of these services that we provide are provided on a sliding fee scale. They're based on, this fee is based on household size and income, and no one is ever denied any of the mandated services. Our mandated services would be communicable disease, STD prevention, family planning, maternal health, and child health. We don't want to, we don't ever want to deny people the services because they can't pay because these are safety net services that are of vital importance to our community. And as we've talked about before, Onslow County ranks 29th out of 100 counties in the year 2023 for health outcomes, where one is the healthiest county in the state and 100 would be the least healthy county. The staff at the Onslow County Health Department works daily to ensure that Onslow County, where we live, learn, work, play, worship, and age, offers its residents the best opportunity possible to reach their full health potential throughout their entire lifespan. And I'm very proud of the staff that we have. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. That concludes our County Departmental Spotlight. Chairman Foster?
Thank you both for sharing the information and the job that you do for Onslow County. And we'll move to item five. Ms. Griffin, beginning our public hearing.
Yes, we have a number of public hearings this morning. Our first is a rezoning, P R E Z 2023-19, our public hearing on Bryn Creek rezoning. And at this time, I will welcome Carter Metcalf, our Planning and Development Director, to give the staff background.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our County Commissioners. First rezoning, as Ms. Griffin said, is the Bryn Creek rezoning, P R E Z 2023, number 19. The applicant is Tidewater and Associates Incorporated, and the owner is our Bryn Creek LLC. Now, to begin with the request overview, the request changes from residential 15, or R15, to residential 10, or R10. The tax map number is 323-82.3. It's located on Blue Creek Road across from Blue Creek Estates, and it's located in Jacksonville Township. The rezoning area is 11.94 acres. Now, to continue the overview of the requests, we look at some of the services. So the existing use is vacant and forested. There is a 6-inch Onwassa water line along Blue Creek Road and Navy Blue Drive, and there is a 6-inch Onwassa sewer force main along Blue Creek Road. Fire service for the area is Southwest Onslow, Fire District 3, and traffic for the road is, we took our count off Blue Creek Road in 2018, had a trip count of 5,900, with a staff estimated capacity of 13,100. Schools servicing the property is Meadowview Elementary, Southwest Middle School, and Southwest High School. There is capacity at both the elementary and the high school. I'll look at the zoning map. Here you can see the property outlined there in black with the black crosshatching. It's currently zoned again, R15, that is the pink color, adjacent RA, and the proposal would be to R10, which would be designated in orange. You can see a little bit of that to the far east in the map. I'll look at R15 district comparison, minimum lot size 15,000 square feet for an approximate .34 acres, a lot. The purpose of the residential 15 zoning district is to accommodate moderate-density single-family residential developments in suburban areas of the county that would have utility and transportation infrastructure necessary to support development of that scale. Now, to compare it to residential 10, or R10, minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, or .23 acres. Purpose of residential 10 is to accommodate moderate-density single-family and limited multifamily residential developments in urbanizing areas of the county that would have access to necessary utility and transportation infrastructure at that more urban scale. Now, to directly compare the two districts a little more, 15,000 square foot lot size for R15, 10,000 square foot lot size for R10. While in residential 15, multifamily is not permitted, but in R10, multifamily would be, at a density of 10 units an acre. That is the most notable difference between the two districts. Otherwise, they're both comparable residential districts from a low to medium density. Now, as we look at our comprehensive plan, the property is in two categories. The first is medium-density residential, and is designed for medium-density, single-family areas, and planned multifamily developments, and limited commercial notes. While the community growth area is the second category, and it's to provide for low-to-medium density housing that is integrated into other residential areas and well-connected to pedestrian and bicycle networks. Now, we'll take a look at this on the map. You can see the blue is that medium-density residential, and there's a small piece of the subject area that would fall within that area. And the medium-density residential, again, is for medium-density, single-family, and planned multifamily, while the community growth area is for the larger area of the tract, and it's designed for low- to medium-density housing. Again, it's integrated to other residential developments. So it's kind of the boundary line there is Blue Creek with medium density there to the north, and community growth area to the south. Now, we'll look at reasonableness in the public interest. Proposal may be considered reasonable because there is other adjacent residential zoning, and there would be four policies in the comprehensive plan that would support that. In summary, those policies are geared towards providing a variety of different types of housing for the citizens of Onslow County. The proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable because the majority of the property is located in the community growth area, and the, and is not well-connected to any sort of pedestrian or bicycle network that would be required for a medium-density scale, such as R10 could lend to. Now, as we look at Planning Board, on August 3, they had their public meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. Four citizens spoke against the petition. Their concerns were regarding existing traffic on the road, a new development creating new traffic, individuals already speeding on Blue Creek Road, that multifamily developments could negatively impact their property values and capacity of our local schools being an important priority. And we'll take a look at the aerial of the property. This is more of a zoomed-out view. You can see the property's location relative to Blue Creek Estates and Blue Creek Farms. Take a little closer look, and you can see it's vacant and forested, and the majority there is to the south of Blue Creek Road. I'll take a look at what it looks like. Your back is to Navy Blue Drive, and then the road you can see in the picture is Blue Creek Road. There's a required sign posting we had to do. So it is respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners would adopt a consistency statement, consider the proposed zoning map amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, we will open the public hearing for P R E Z 2023-19 for the Bryn Creek rezoning. And we do have one citizen who has signed up to speak, Jason Houston, 306 New Bridge Street.
Jason Houston, 306 New Bridge Street. I'm with Tidewater Associates, representing Bryn Creek for this rezone. Obviously, it went to Planning Board, and it was unanimous. I think some of the questions regarding some of the traffic and a lot of the citizens' concerns were that small little tract across the street where the sign was. I think they thought that whole area was going to get rezoned, and it's really just a small little sliver that was left over as part of this parent tract. That area, while it is going to be part of the rezone, isn't really large enough to do anything. The developer of the property wishes to explore to do some multifamily, some townhomes. Obviously, R10 allows that. That little sliver across the street is eat up with sign easements, setbacks, a 36-inch sewage force main from the city of Jacksonville, and then the rest of it's wetlands. So there's not a whole lot anybody can do with that little sliver over there. It'll stay probably just like it is. I don't want to say never, because never's a long time, but, and that's where it's at today. If you've got any questions, I'll be right over here.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. That concludes our public hearing. I'd like to close the public hearing for this item, and it is now available for Commissioner discussion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a question for the gentleman representing Tidewater Associates. One of the questions that I have had brought to my attention repeatedly as well regarding traffic more specifically is with the multifamily homes that are built over there, what kind of entrance, is it going to be directly adjacent or directly across the street from Navy Blue, or would it be set off from that? And would there be a lane that could, I don't know what you call those, turnoff lanes? It's the...
Yeah, deceleration lane.
There you go.
DOT will set whatever standards, you know, depending on how many units we can get in there. I don't foresee getting a bunch of units. We do have gravity sewer that's available to the site. The driveway probably won't be straight across from the entrance to Blue Creek Farms. It'll most likely be down toward the end of the site. The way that it's zoned now, we had explored looking at putting individual homes with individual driveways, and of course, nobody likes that idea, but, you know, with multifamily, we can do one driveway with an internally served system.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
I have a question. First of all, there's another, I don't know if she came to the board, but we received a letter up here from an Ashley Marillo. She's a teacher, and she took the time to read, or excuse me, to type her opinion against this development as a schoolteacher. So I wanted to let people know that we've had people come up, and we've also had Ms. Ashley Marillo write a letter to us, which I commend her for doing because she took the time and the effort. One of the things I noticed on the slide upgrading to this residential area, I'm just curious, it says recreational facilities associated with the residential area. Does that mean, is that an HOA? Whatever it's, whatever recreational facility is only going to be tied to that housing development, is that what I'm, am I misinterpreting that? Because that's what it sounds like to me.
Yes, sir. So that is a potential use, could be either like a pool associated with that development. I don't know if the developer has any plans for any, but that is a permitted use because when if you rezone the whole property, it would be for obviously the neighborhood, and then any sort of neighborhood-related property would be permitted.
I have a question. With the multifamily designation, you must have a reason for needing bicycle access and pedestrian traffic. That area, there's not enough room to even walk on the side of the road hardly unless you're walking in the ditch. There's no shoulder there, there's no bike lane, there's nothing. And, you know, if you ride a bike, you can ride about a mile to get to Baker's, and then you got to go another half a mile or so to get to a grocery store. So that doesn't seem like an area that's designed for that type of multifamily, you know, closer housing to me. It just doesn't make sense. Somebody gonna get killed if they try to ride their bike along Blue Creek Road and go into Baker's. They ain't nowhere to ride it.
No, sir. To my understanding, there is not a designated sidewalk or bicycle lane along Blue Creek Road.
Okay, I understand all that. You know, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because a lot of people look at rezoning as a boring thing that we do as Commissioners, but it's not. So, you know, when I have citizens coming forward and then Ashley Marillo writing an email, I represent the people, and I've got to take into consideration what she's saying and kind of analyze it for myself. And that little thing that I asked you about, the HOA, that bothers me because that opens the door for having a pool, a recreational facility, no one else nearby can use that except for the residents of that particular area. And I have a concern with the traffic pattern down there in Blue Creek. I've been down Blue Creek Road. I hate going down that road because there are a lot of people that speed down that road, and I think it's a very dangerous road. And Ashley Marillo makes a compelling argument in terms of the safety of the children and the overcrowding of schools. So these are all things that we, as Commissioners, have to take into consideration. So whether we vote yea or nay, just keep in mind, that's what we have to do. It's not a personal thing. It's not a personal thing. It's just the way we feel, and we have to vote our conscience. So that's all I want to say about that.
With the schools, is it appropriate if we ask Dr. Gardner? I don't want to put him on the spot. He can wave me off if he wants to. I think the schools that service that area is Meadowview Elementary, Southwest Middle, and then Southwest High. What's the, those schools and their capacity at the time?
Southwest High School, we did just do a rezoning because they did have some capacity. Meadowview is close to capacity. Southwest Middle School is well above capacity already.
Do we have many schools that are not?
Just a few. Yes, sir.
That's a common denominator there.
Thank you, sir. How many, I guess we need to ask Carter this, do we have any, how far down Blue Creek Road do we have any other R-10 zoning on that highway or road?
So off the top of my head, I'm not sure of exactly how many feet, but on the zoning map, you can see the edge of the R-10 zoning. It is nearby, however, it's not immediately adjacent.
Is it well-connected to bike paths and sidewalks?
I don't believe, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just say, there's a huge need for housing in Onslow County, and I agree that Blue Creek Road is a difficult road, and I'm sure that Commissioner Buchanan and I will continue to advocate for improvements to Blue Creek Road on the Transportation Committee. But the fact is, you know, they can, I think if you think about having, oh, how many driveways they could put on the Blue Creek Road if they decide to build single-family homes on 1,500 square foot lots, it's going to have a much greater traffic impact than to have, like you said, one driveway that has an entrance and exit for all of the people who live there. So if you're looking at, and you know what, I mean, we can't stop people from coming to Onslow County, and we're going to grow, and that's why we have planning, that's why we have a capital improvement program so we can build schools to accommodate these people. And, you know, we got to be able to, we got to be able to grow. We already, we have a workforce housing shortage now, and this kind of property, the kind of townhouses or apartments is the kind of housing that we actually need in Onslow County right now.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Can you raise your hand if it's a yes vote? And a no vote, the motion for rezoning fails. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to the next.
Yes, sir. Chairman, Foster, and Commissioners, we're actually moving on now to general items, and our first two items are with our Sheriff, Chris Thomas.
Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. I've come for you today about the inmate health services contract to be amended. On July 20th, 2020, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners approved a contract between the sheriff's office and Southern Health Partners whereby the Southern Health Partners would provide healthcare for inmates in Onslow County Detention Center. That contract expired this year on June 30th, 2023. Southern Health Partners and I would like to request an extension on the existing contract to make it effective July 1 of this year through June 30th of 2024 in the amount of It's respectfully acceded that the Board of Commissioners approved an inmate healthcare services contract amendment between the sheriff and Orkanslow County and the Southern Health Partners and authorized the county, excuse me, the chairman to execute the documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chris, do we have people to come in with a lot of healthcare problems that kind of chew that money up pretty rapidly?
Tremendous healthcare problems. We have everything from obvious drug addiction to severe heart trouble, all kinds. We've had one inmate we've been in and out of the hospital with the past five days, almost every day with seizures. We finally worked out to get them transported to safekeeping in Raleigh, which we still have to pay for to care there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
All right. The next item I have is the School Resource Officer Agreement between the Board of Education and Onslow County Sheriff's Office. We have entered into an agreement whereby the sheriff's office provides school resource officers to elementary, middle, and high schools. They have been financial changes since last year's contract, adding additional SROs to this year's budget and increasing the revenue from 1.6, excuse me, $1,618,382.22 up to $2,152,138. The Board of Education and I wish to continue this agreement beginning in July 1 of this year. It's respectfully acceded that the Board of Commissioners accept the agreement between Onslow County Board of Education, Onslow County Sheriff's Office for the SROs for elementary, middle, and high schools for Onslow County. It is also requested that the Board of Commissioners authorize myself and the county manager sign this contract on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chris, is there any, what's the reason? Is the reason for the half-million dollar increase due to covering the elementary schools and all of the elementary schools? Is that the reason for the increase?
We added SROs to our high-traffic high school. The school also came to us and wanted to add a security sergeant for the entire school system, for the county. We agreed to that. The school, in this contract, they've agreed to pay 100% of that cost because it'll be a year-round employee for the schools. They also provide the outfit cost to outfit that deputy. In addition to that, over the years, the contract has not included any equipment improvement or replacement of expired or outdated equipment such as tactical vests, radios, things of that nature. There's funding in this contract to address that, and we have a plan to review that or accept money for that each year in contract so we can keep this equipment updated. There's also a one-time payment for some equipment for emergency response, ballistic-type equipment, which I prefer to keep confidential as far as what it actually is, but it is for a response to an active shooter situation within our schools. As you know, our SROs are directed to immediately, directly, without hesitation, respond to any deadly threat or any activity at the schools which could jeopardize our students or staff.
So this is the, this will be the second year where then we'll have all elementary schools covered?
This year, we have every elementary school. We have two SROs in OCLC, which is on 72. We have two SROs in White Oak High School, and we added a second SRO to Southwest High School this year. Reason those were added is the volume of traffic, the volume of cost of service that our deputies respond to there is high.
Any further discussion? I think there's some significant things in that is the additional SROs, and then I think the security sergeants, because I think Jacksonville has also got a security sergeant with the city.
Yes, sir. The city and the county both have the security officers now, and I think that'd go a long ways in addressing some of the issues that the school and law enforcement have.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Our next item is the Amateur Radio Emergency Services MOU, and that's with Norman Bryson.
Chairman, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, this item is a memorandum of understanding with the Amateur Radio Emergency Services Group and Onslow County Emergency Services. For years, the Amateur Radio Club, otherwise known as Aries, has provided us services during times of disasters to help us man stations at local shelters and the county EOC to help operate and make sure we had backup communications. They've also done a lot of work for us to help make sure our generators are operating and running out at these facilities. This is an update of an agreement that has been in existence since 2007. We want to make sure we had kind of gone through, refreshed it back up. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and will respectfully question the Board of Commissioners, consider approving the Aries MOU and authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have another follow-up question from my request yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
So when a disaster is imminent, I'm assuming that's really the only reason that we do call upon them is for a natural disaster. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you give me an idea of what kind of a timeframe there is? I mean, how much before, how much after? And this might sound really crazy, but I know some people are uneasy with the fact that, you know, a entity can be listening in on conversations or things like that. So I just want to kind of squelch that.
So when we bring in the Amateur Radio Club, now, mind you, they're working directly off of the amateur radio frequencies. They're not working off of anything that we operate within County for Emergency Services. They are bringing those radio frequencies to the table, and it depends on whatever type of disaster. So, you know, just the last storm that we had come through, we did not bring them in, and they did not operate within our facility whatsoever. However, we go to a situation of a Florence, which we were here, you know, the storm was over us for almost eight to 10 days. They were there with us throughout that timeframe where the EOC was activated through that entire event because we needed those additional communications. We also know a lot of our telephone systems and other systems did fail throughout the county, and we needed those as additional backup during that situation.
So as the storm is approaching and then until it's all restored?
Well, not restored or until we get to a point of beginning recovery would be the point, and that's hard to define.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you.
How many of the operators do we have in Onslow County that, when it's necessary, become part of that communication?
So they will go out, they will at least, how many do they have in the whole organization? I am not sure, but what they have manned us in the past is they'll bring in two to three people into the EOC, and then two people who will go out to each one of the shelters that we have that are in our school systems. We have four primary shelters that we operate currently.
Fantastic. That's great. I know several of the ham operators, and they are enthusiasts, but when it becomes necessary, they become a vital part of the disaster recovery and finding or saving lives. They're a part of that, so we appreciate that and them volunteering their time. So any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Norman. Our next item is a sole-source purchase with Ray Silence.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Onslow County 911 will need to relocate and connect the Motorola radio fiber lines that connect the dispatch server room to the 400-foot radio tower located at the rear of the Emergency Operations Center. Their fiber mover and connection is necessary for the Emergency Operations Center building expansion project. Due to system software and hardware components and the overall product design, there is currently no other companies or dealers authorized to provide this service. All the associated costs are tied into the EOC expansion joint project. It is respectfully requested that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider the sole-source purchase of fiber relocation and connection by Motorola as authorized under North Carolina General Statute 143-129, and authorize the chairman to execute the documents on behalf of Onslow County.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have to say this because you didn't say what you promised me you would yesterday.
I did. Yes, I did.
Did you? Okay. Did I not hear it?
All costs are associated with the EOC expansion.
All right. I won't give you a hard time. It was included in the budget. That was all.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Science, before you go, I want to say we appreciate what you do, not only as a telecommunications division head, but you work throughout your community at the local high school, volunteering time there as well as with your volunteer fire department. So we appreciate your service to your community and what you do.
Well, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a grant acceptance with Jennifer Bumgarner.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. On July 17th, 2023, the Board of Commissioners accepted a North Carolina Appropriations Act grant in the amount of $50,000 from the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management. The subrecipient of these funds is the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina Incorporated. The subrecipient agreement that's been presented to you for the North Carolina State Appropriations Award establishes the terms, conditions, and respective responsibilities of the county and grant subrecipient, Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the subrecipient agreement for the North Carolina State Appropriations Award, and if approved, authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. And Ms. Bumgarner, we think, is this the first time you've spoke with us?
No.
You've been here, but we appreciate it. We haven't had a grant manager, and we're glad that you're here taking care of this for us.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next item is a repair issue at Deppi Playground with Katie White.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Deppi Park at Hoffman Forest opened to the public in early 2008. The park currently offers walking trails, a picnic pavilion, and two playgrounds. The playgrounds are the main attraction at Deppi Park and also one of the few public playgrounds in the northern part of Onslow County. The current play structures at Deppi Park are more than 15 years old and have deteriorated over the years due to extensive usage and exposure to the sun. Repairs have been made to the existing play structures over the years, but the equipment has now deteriorated to a point where it's critical to be replaced. The most recent playground inspection identified safety issues that could pose safety risks to those using the equipment. As a result, the playground has been closed to the public. It is requested that the Board of Commissioners consider using tourism funds to replace the playground equipment at Deppi Park. Funding would include replacement of two structures. The smaller structure would serve ages two to five, and the larger structure would be designed to accommodate children in the five-to-12-year-old range. The total estimated cost of site work, equipment, and installation is $200,000. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider allocating tourism dollars in the amount of $200,000 to fund the replacement play structures at Deppi Park, and if approved, to authorize the chairman to sign the associated project ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions with it. It's a two-edged sword here, and I want you to know upfront, you are doing a wonderful job, and I really appreciate what you and your staff are doing. It has nothing to do with you at all. The issue is, I have requested, and I'm not quite sure the tourism funds is what should be used for this purpose. And the reason is, is that I have yet to got a copy of any guidance or SOP. I got an application process this morning, but how are we being consistent throughout our county with the other municipalities that are in the same shape? Two and a half years ago, my decision, the reason I voted down the other park was because of the deterioration of our county equipment in all the parks. I stated then that we were not maintaining our parks like we should. Now, all of a sudden, we just went through a budget process. Why wasn't that addressed in the budget? And I was told this morning, and believing 100% is prioritized, I have no problem with that. But this issue was covered two and a half years ago, and now we're doing the same thing again. We have to be consistent, and that's all I'm asking, is address the issues, let's get the right answers, and let's move forward. It's hard to not be consistent with our partners in this county.
I think our structure of our tourism funds is municipalities request reimbursement for their expenditures.
That is correct. And Brett may want to speak to this as well, but we have a statute that sets up the use of our occupancy tax that the county collects for tourism funds. Other municipalities also have occupancy tax. So, for example, North Topsail Beach collects their own occupancy tax and can use that for their facilities. We do share that occupancy tax with municipalities through our normal process for outside agencies in our budget process so that we can encourage folks to come and visit Onslow County. And to... and to visit places like our parks and our beaches and other facilities in our county, sometimes when they're coming in to see relatives or for other reasons. In this case, though, we do use, at times, tourism funds to support our own internal Parks and Rec Department because it is something that is eligible as far as our capital improvements because we do tend to have tourists come and utilize some of our park structures. We're careful about how much we use of that. I will say that alternatively, if the board would like to on its own motion, this could be paid for out of operating funds and could be taken out of fund balance, just like recent items were taken out of fund balance, if that would make the board more comfortable. Our concern is that it's become a safety issue. It was not prioritized first during the budget process. We thought we could limp through. We basically told Katie she couldn't have both the Hubert Park repair and this repair and to prioritize. And we felt like at the time that Hubert Park was closer to failure. And we were wrong about that in one way because Depey Park has had to be shut down now. We really need both repaired. Initially, Katie asked me, could we switch those two and do the repair to Depey and not the repair to Hubert? But we really need both, and they're in different parts of the county. And our citizens in both areas need the access, and our tourists in both areas, our visitors, need access. So I would leave it to the board how you would like to pay for it.
Let me just, let me say this. Katie, you're doing a great job, and it's not, it's not, nobody's dressing you down. And they shouldn't be dressing you down in a meeting about something like this, okay? So I want to say that first and foremost. So I don't have any problems with, this is tourism fund. But what concerns me is that we've got a safety issue with kids, okay? Regardless of how we pay for it, that's a priority. They're kids. People use our parks, okay? I don't want to take my grandson to a park and fall down because of faulty equipment and get hurt, and he has to go to O M H or whatever it might be. So let's forget the grandstanding here, and let's get to the nitty-gritty. So we're not, I'm not dressing you down one bit. I think you did a wonderful job. I think you have priorities that you have to choose. I have absolutely no problem spending tourism money to get this fixed and to turn around and get Hubert fixed because we are talking about kids of Onslow County, and that should be a priority, no matter how it's funded. So I just want to throw my two cents and worth in and let you know how I feel, and keep up doing the great job that you're doing.
I concur with that, very much concur with that, what he just got done saying. The other thing is, we have a lot of partners. Swansboro, Richlands, Topsail Beach, Holly Ridge. We partner with them all the time with tourism money. Tourism money needs to be used. It's not taxpayers' money, so let's move forward.
Yeah, and it makes sense. Whenever I go on vacation, I'm looking for something that I can do for free, okay? And so the parks and recreation, that provides an area of something you can do for free. So it makes sense to use tourism money because people from out of town are looking to go somewhere to go. They don't have to spend a lot of buckage. So that makes sense to me.
How'd you know I was going to say something? So I'm all in support of getting this fixed, for sure. It is just a matter of where the money is coming from. And since I'm new and don't understand exactly tourism funds and where they should be applied or shouldn't be applied, I understand the kind of, it seems like an additional benefit that people that come to the area might go to the parks. But I know it prior, the number-one usage is from citizens who actually live here. So can someone explain to me exactly what the definition is or what the, I don't even know, if it's a statute or whatever it is, that says like how we can spend tourism funds? I mean, my understanding from someplace else was it was brick-and-mortar kind of things, like, you know? And I guess you could think a playground is brick-and-mortar, but...
So the statute actually specifies that it's events that actually put folks into hotels.
Right.
So that's pretty much a slam dunk. So if we have a festival, and a lot of what Parks and Rec does during the year, we fund the marketing for some of those festivals and for also our municipalities that bring those folks in, that actually stay in hotels. That's how the Sports Commission also gets tourism funds because they have events that bring people in for some of their 5Ks. The other thing the statute mentions are things that tend to encourage tourism in the county. So if we can make a good faith argument that improving the capital status of our parks in some percentage, I don't think it would be in good faith if we did an entire park with tourism funds. But we can do some renewed playground equipment and things of that nature because it will encourage tourism. It makes Onslow County more attractive to those who might visit Eastern North Carolina and trying to choose which part of Eastern North Carolina they come to. So we do try to be very careful to stay in legal compliance with the statute. It's obviously a gray zone. So, you know...
Thank you.
If we, if we were doing a whole park, we would probably do a percentage, which is why we did Hans Farm the way we did. We did a part of it with tourism and a part of it with operating funds because it was a split. Okay?
Well, another example, too, take Swansboro. I mean, Swansboro gets a lot of money from this board when it comes to tourism money. The pavilion, the parking lots, the docks. We do a lot for Swansboro down there, and their TDA goes into partnership with us. They use, most of the time, like recently, they had a situation, which I explained it to the manager, but they're going to take care of that on their own. And that's $125,000 they're taking out of their own budget to fix that problem they have behind the borough, which is actually, the actual wall is falling away into the river. But we have done a lot with Holly Ridge, Swansboro, Richlands, everybody with this money, and it's a big help. And the people enjoy what we do for them, and that's what it brings the tourism people into our community.
Chairman, I would like to call for a vote, please.
Okay. Tourism funds, we go through that every year in the budget. So we've already allocated quite a few dollars to areas in Onslow County.
We have.
Do we know that number?
I don't know the exact number, but we did not allocate the full amount of revenue that was anticipated with tourism. We had a good amount of money that was left in the margin because we do try to be very careful to stick to the purposes outlined in the statute.
Fantastic. So our choice is, if we don't support this, then that money is going to have to come out of fund balance. And if we don't want it to come out of fund balance, then we're not going to repair what is going on there, so we'll keep a park closed to why people go. So at this point, we're ready to make a vote. So all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll forward out, it's local legislation for the occupancy tax. I'll forward out to the entire board, just so you have a refresher of what that, what that looks like.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, and it's actually our next five items. We're gonna, we're gonna really get our money's worth out of Chrissy today. She is going to present the next five.
All right. The first of the five is a second reading for the Onslow County Tattooist Ordinance repeal. The Onslow County Health Department conducted an evaluation of local Board of Health rules in keeping with our accreditation activities. This evaluation revealed that we had a 1981 tattooist ordinance still on the books. Statewide tattoo regulations became effective April 1 of 1995 with North Carolina General Statute 130A-283. With the implementation of these statewide tattoo regulations, the repeal of the local rule or ordinance was recommended as part of this Board of Health rules evaluation that we conducted in July. On August 21st, a public hearing was held on this topic. And today, I'm respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, as the Board of Health, consider repealing the 1981 Onslow County Ordinance, Chapter 8, License and Business Regulations, Article 6, Tattooist, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the associated ordinance effectuating this repeal. And if you have questions, I'm happy to take those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just a clarification. I know you mentioned this at the last meeting, and I didn't take notes down on it. You said that we would revisit this one, but not the other two, the smoking control and the rabies post-exposure. What was the difference between those and this one?
So this is an ordinance. The other were Board of Health rules.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
All righty. Next up, we have the Board of Health Rule Adjudications Attestation. North Carolina Health Department Accreditation Activity 35.1 requires the Health Department to assure it follows the procedures for adjudications that are set forth in General Statute 130A-24. In Onslow County, no Board of Health Rule adjudications have occurred since the last accreditation site visit. And this accreditation standard requires a signed statement from the Board of Health attesting that no local Board of Health Rule adjudications have occurred. Today, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, serving as the Board of Health, consider signing the attestation statement that no Board of Health Rule adjudications have occurred since the last accreditation site visit to assist us in meeting Accreditation Standard 35.1 and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
All right. Next up, we have Board of Health Rules. North Carolina Health Department Accreditation Activity 34.3 requires the Health Department to follow procedures for adopting rules, and these procedures are outlined in General Statute 130A-39. In Onslow County, no new local Board of Health rules have been adopted since the last accreditation site visit in January of 2018. The accreditation standard requires the signed statement from the Board of Health attesting that no local Board of Health rules have been adopted. And today, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, as the Board of Health, consider signing the attestation statement that no new local Board of Health rules have been adopted since the last accreditation site visit in January of 18 to help us meet Accreditation Standard 34.3 and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Next up, Environmental Health Local Rules. North Carolina Health Department Accreditation Activity 17.2 requires the Health Department to conduct inspection and permitting activities assigned to the local Health Department by local rules, ordinances, or policies. In Onslow County, no local Board of Health Environmental Health rules have been adopted since the last site visit. And this accreditation standard requires a signed statement from the Board of Health attesting that no local Board of Health rules exist for environmental health. Today, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, as the Board of Health, consider signing the attestation statement that no existing local Board of Health rules have been adopted for environmental health to assist us in meeting Accreditation Standard 17.2 and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. And if you have questions, I'm happy to take those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I was looking at this fee list here on the attachments. Some of them go up from like 97.50 to 130, 187.50 to 250, I mean, 247 to 330, 300 to 400, so on and so forth. Some of them go down. What's the reason behind that?
I think that's our next item. That's going to be the fees for environmental health rules.
Oh, that's not what we're on?
That's not what we're on.
I was going to say, Ms. Hoover, that's the next one.
I apologize.
So we'll...
This one is, this is attesting that we have no local environmental health rules adopted by the Board of Health.
You just turned too many pages. There's just many pages.
We're getting there. There's a lot of them.
Price has advanced, and he's moving ahead of us, but we'll have to bring him back to this one there. So any other discussion besides the next one? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
All right. Next up, we have Legislative Environmental Health Fee and Name Changes. Session Law 2023-90, which was House Bill 628, has multiple sections that affect the on-site wastewater industry. Section 12 addresses environmental health fees that shall become effective September 1 of 2023. There is a position statement included in your packet, and it outlines new terminology associated with these legislatively mandated fee changes. Licensed soil scientists COVID-19 permits were enacted during the COVID pandemic, which allowed a third-party permitting option. Licensed soil scientist COVID-19 permitting option was dissolved with the state of emergency, and now they will be replaced in name by authorized on-site wastewater evaluator permits. Today, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the name and fee changes outlined in the fee schedule that was included in the packet, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay. Can you answer that question now about, is why they fluctuate? Why some go up, some go down?
I guess we need to get a motion in a...
We got a motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Got it.
I'm surprised.
So these changes that have been outlined are seeking to have some, create some standardization across the state with different types of permits. And then the legislative changes that have been implemented take what were currently created fees and limit, in some ways, what a county can charge for some of these options. So what we have outlined here is that we will see the volume associated with different permit types change. So while some fees are increasing, there really will not be a real increase in revenues collected because we have seen the volume of those fee types go to zero. So I hope that helps you understand what changes that we would see for some that were increasing, for others that decreased. The decrease is associated with the state setting a limit of what can be charged for certain permits. And so we are seeking to align our fee schedule with what the state legislator has outlined for us.
Okay. So one in particular here that just kind of, kind of throws me. Improvement permit only individual A2 97.50 to 325. Why is there that? That's a pretty big jump.
So that is one of the permits that we, that we were allowed to make a change for. And with the A2 permit, that is one of our third-party permit options whereby someone who is a soil scientist employed in a private company outside of the Health Department can choose to do the work of the permit. And then our portion of that is to review paperwork and to serve as the entity that files that paperwork and keeps it on record.
Well, is it that our costs are going up as a result of the permitting process?
So this is one of those where the volume has gone to nothing. So even though there is an increase in the charge that could be collected, we're not actually seeing anybody use that option.
These engineer options don't require you to go out and inspect them. Is that correct? So it reduces the work that the Health Department has to do because all of the liability is on the engineer or the soil scientist instead of the county.
So yes, that is, that is somewhat true. There is, there are changes that were seen across the state whereby there were wait times that the legislator was seeking to reduce. So in many counties, the wait time for permits were several weeks to months. That was not the case in Onslow County, and we are really an anomaly because our team does a great job with that. But this change that they have made in the legislature was, you know, was to impact the entire field or the entire sector for on-site wastewater and to give different options to property owners for permitting. And so that's, that's what they're outlining, trying to do, and it will change how, how individuals seek which permits they take advantage of, and it will change the volumes that we see, and it will change the revenues that we collect.
Any further discussions or questions?
I still don't exactly understand. Maybe I'm a little slow. But, you know, what is driving the fee higher? Well, just, just tell me that. Shoot it to me like that.
I think the, the options that we have, it creates, it makes it be a percentage of the fees that we currently have. And so it's, it's trying to implement a standardized way to reduce the cost of sun permits and then say you can charge up to a percentage in these other cases. I think what we need to also realize is that with third-party permit options, there is still a responsibility for the county to ensure that everything is done in a compliant way. And we do have responsibility for filing all of that and making sure that we follow up on any complaints that might arise in the future.
And Chrissy, aren't we having, under state guidelines, we have to retain this in a searchable format for 30 years?
Yes. So we, we serve as the entity that will house those permits that are written, are authorized by a third party. So we still have a responsibility for collecting the paperwork, validating that what was done is all complete, and then filing that in our records for any future property owner that might take that property in the future.
Some of these fees, of course, cover our personnel costs in handling these things, but it also covers those unseen costs, like the computer servers and all the work that our IT... our IT department does to make sure that we're keeping all the data for 30 years and keeping it backed up. And there are costs associated with that.
Commissioner Price, and I think this is where Commissioner Price is going, and Chrissy, please let me know if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is we're going to have a net decrease in fees collected. So the state, in some respects, has said you have to charge less in some areas, and then you're allowed to charge a little bit more in other areas.
To compensate for the loss, isn't that...
That's right. But overall, they're expecting a net decrease in funding. So I don't know. I understand what you're saying, but I think the answer to what you're saying is they've prohibited us from collecting fees that we were accustomed to in some areas and now are allowing us a little bit more in other areas.
To balance out.
To balance out, but doesn't balance. The county, net-wise, will receive less than fees. Is that correct?
That is correct. And with this individual fee, that the one that you're talking about, the volume of permits that we have seen there is zero. So there is no realized gain. And I think that their intent was to say you've now got two options, but the volume will go up for one, goes down for the other, therefore the fee for the ones that are going down in volume would go up, but it's not going to be that way because the volume of permits that we will see in that way has already changed. We've already seen that decrease. So the fact that the fee on paper is higher does not result in a realized gain for us.
Okay. I think I got it now. I would just have to say that the individual improvement-only permit would require more inspections and works from the Health Department than an engineered improvement permit, which was done, the work was done by an engineer instead of the Health Department. So that seems to me like that would be the justification for that increase would be because it would increase the work that our Health Department has to do for that particular permit. Am I close?
Close, yes.
All right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that concludes Chrissy's items. Thank you so much, Chrissy. We now have our budget amendments with our Finance Officer, Andrew Prince.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. This evening, or this afternoon, I have two budget amendments for you. Budget number 14 is to allocate tourism fund balance totaling $200,000 to the renovation of Depp Park. And number 15 is to true up the Board of Education revenues for the School Resource Officer line items in accordance with the Fiscal 24 contract, as approved by the Board of Commissioners earlier today. This will allocate $95,180.15 to SRO supplies and equipment and $256,957.85 to additional salaries and wages. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve these budget amendments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next item is the interim manager contract with Brett DeSelm.
Good afternoon. The interim county manager services are needed while the county advertises for the county manager position. The Board is asked to consider engaging David Smitherman to serve as interim county manager effective October 4, 2023. Mr. Smitherman's resume and proposed services agreement is included for your review and consideration. It's respectfully requested that the Board consider engaging David Smitherman to serve as interim county manager effective August, October 4, 2023, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the services agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Our next section are our appointments, and the first one is the Onslow County Hospital Authority Board, which met at its regularly scheduled meeting on July 27, 2023, and voted unanimously to forward nominations for your consideration for reappointment or appointment of terms expiring September 30, 2023. The Onslow County Hospital Authority is requesting consideration of the listed names below for appointment or reappointment, and you have been provided ballots to make this choice. Seat number one, William Darner, an incumbent. Seat number five, Joel Churchwell, an incumbent. Seat number six, Pat Alfred, an incumbent. Seat number 11, Ralph Taylor, an incumbent. Seat number 12, Stephen Blackburn. Mr. Brandon Mills is not seeking reappointment to seat number 12. Also, Mr. Richard McIntosh is submitted as an additional name pursuant to Section 7 of our joint resolution. All of the applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office, and we do respectfully request the appointment of these individuals based on your ballot, Okay, thank you for your patience. Seat number two unanimously is William Darner. Seat number five unanimously is Joel Churchwell. Seat number six is Pat Alfred. Seat number 11 unanimously is Ralph Taylor. Seat number 12 is Stephen Blackburn. Our next appointment is for the Airport Advisory Commission, which is comprised of seven members and one commissioner liaison. This advisory board advises the airport director and the Board of Commissioners on issues related to the operation and development of Albert J. Ellis Airport. Mr. Patrick Farmer has expressed an interest in appointment in the Jacksonville category with a term expiring September 30, 2026. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Patrick Farmer, Jacksonville Township, for a three-year term expiring September 30, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Our final item today is for an appointment to the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments Board. We have recently rejoined the Cog as a member. The Eastern Carolina Council asks that the county appoint a commissioner as its representative to attend the meetings. This representative would serve on both the general membership board and on the executive committee. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners nominate and appoint a commissioner for a one-year term on the Eastern Carolina Council of Government Board.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to appoint someone? I don't even know. Sorry.
Did you make a motion or no?
I did make a motion.
Is that a nonprofit board?
All right, so let me make an amendment to that motion. So you made a motion to approve, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Mark Price to this board.
Second.
Okay, and to answer your question, Commissioner Bennett, it is a division of the state, so it's excluded, just like the community college is, from that law that prevents commissioners from serving.
Right.
We have a motion.
We got a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Price to the board. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Commissioner Price will be our representative at the Eastern Carolina Council of Government. You can check on the parks and rec while you're there for some free time before your meetings. Ms. County Manager, Ms. Griffin, it's your turn, I do believe.
Thank you so much. Obviously, right now, in addition to usual county operations, we're watching what we anticipate to be Hurricane Lee later today, and it is anticipated to become, right now, the forecast says, a Category 4. It's unclear whether or not it will turn up or if it'll head in our direction, so if you're praying people, let's pray that it turns up into the Atlantic and stays away from North Carolina, but we will be keeping a very close eye on that. And in hurricane news, I would like to give a special thanks to our department heads and to our Emergency Services Director, Norman Bryson, and our Emergency Management and Deputy Manager, Stacy Miles, who does an incredible job preparing us and did fantastic work, Darren Idalia, our entire staff of our Emergency Services Team, Sheriff Thomas, and all of our deputies who put in a lot of extra time, our asset and facilities management team, which works tirelessly during storm events and is out there very early to look at our facilities and to make sure everything's safe, and our IT department, which is constantly called upon, and of course, communications. We just thank all of our folks who work hard and make these storms look so seamless in the way that we manage them. And that's all I have unless you have questions. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. I did want to thank Kevin Rappel and compliment him on the new website. If you haven't visited the county's webpage, it's much improved. Thank you for that, and we thank Ms. Hoover for the work that you're doing to keep our county safe. Y'all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Good afternoon, and I hope everyone has a blessed day. We got a lot going on. There's a lot coming to us, so now God bless you, and we'll see you the next time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Mr. Price?
Just wanted to provide an update for you about the things that were transpiring out at Heinz Farm Park and Stables. A lot of public interest there in that, so I wanted to share with you some of the recent things going on. Recently, we have completed a mile and a half trail for hiking out there. That was a part of the plan whenever we first purchased Heinz Farm, that we were going to have hiking trails, because if I remember correctly, we had a survey that showed that hiking was one of the main activities that the people of Onslow County wanted. So we can check that one off, okay? We got the hiking trail. We replaced AC unit in the cabin. We've added one parking spot per cabin for customer convenience, and it's my understanding that the cabins stay rented fairly regularly. Yeah, so that's a good thing. It's the only park in Onslow County that is bringing in revenue. That's a good thing for Onslow County. We partnered with Jones Onslow to install some safety lights along the park entrance road, so safety there. We're partnering with Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission to offer a 5K trail run on September 30, so 5K run on September 30. Cooperative Extension Beekeepers Association holds their monthly meetings there through December, so the beekeepers, we know how important bees are for pollination, if you want some squash and zoogs and kooks and stuff like that. So we are using that. And also, there was the Dairy Association, there was a plan for that, but it got canceled during the storm. I'm assuming that will be rescheduled.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
12th.
Okay, so they got a dairy display and free ice cream as well, for those who are interested. Also, Onslow County Parks and Recreation is holding a monthly Kids Night Out program and plans to hold holiday-themed art classes in the fall. So Parks and Recreation making use of Heinz Farm. Good stuff. Onslow County Park and Recreation will be holding a holiday camp in the last week of December. Once again, getting it done. 4-H utilizing meeting space and arena for youth programming. So the social halls being rented out, field and event space, and of course, as we said, the cabin. So there's your Heinz Farm update. Also, we want to thank the good Lord for pushing that past storm off fairly quickly, that Onslow County didn't have a good deal of impact from that. It could have been a whole lot worse than it was. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, my gosh. Well, up until Mark was talking, I thought everybody was...
Well, up until Mark was talking, I thought everybody was deferring their time to me, because I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, it is really great to see so many Directors in attendance at this meeting, and I thank you so much for investing your time in coming today. We all have been busy, many of us, including some of the staff here, attended the, well, I attended my first annual North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference in Raleigh, and we learned so much. Classes that I intended included topics like county finance, the state of risk in local governments today, and farmland conservation, all of which were very beneficial as far as the education they provide and information that I have to work with now. My favorite part, though, I tell you, was probably networking with the other Commissioners from around the state. Proved very fruitful for some really hot topics in our county that I think you'll be hearing about in the near future. Last week, I also had the pleasure of spending time with our really just most amazing Library Director Jennifer Whaley, and touring the main library and Swansboro. And I just have to say, this is an old adage I used to hear, it's the speed of the leader is the speed of the gang, and she definitely leads with positivity and enthusiasm and a real knack for creating a team environment there. She has an exceptional team there. She has to do, she does so much with what they have, and despite their limitations, they're all very resourceful and joyful and provide the most incredible services to our families in the area here. I knew about this before I even got there, I was very curious to meet the people that do the reading for the children, because my neighbor across the street has two little girls, and she says, oh my gosh, the library is so amazing. We were there, and there was this woman reading a book, and we're going to go, now it's two times a week, and she was just so ecstatic about it, so I was curious to see who all these people are that do these great services for our families. Storytime has hit all record highs. At the main library, they had 90 people in attendance recently, and 145 at Swansboro, which I just think is amazing. She's got a wonderful gal named Tori Parks, who is doing a lot of advertising, and she gave me some stats too, I think you'd all be interested to know, because I feel like this is one of the unsung heroes that we have in our county. But the monthly average attendance at different locations, 11,500 citizens attend the main branch on average a month. 4,500 attend Swansboro's branch, 2,700 at Richlands, and 7,200 at Snead's Ferry, which I just think that's really notable, and we need to be paying attention to that. Reading is the key to success in children's lives and family lives. The last number I love is 10,000 hits per month on digital resources. I mean, just a huge thank you so much. I'm looking forward to being able to go see the other branches, and thank you to the whole staff in the Library Division. Lastly, and this is kind of sad, but I want to be sure that I acknowledge something that we talked about yesterday when I was visiting with them. I want to take time to say some words about my first favorite Director, Chris White, with the Airport Authority, who will be leaving our airport at the end of next week. Although I'm very happy for him personally in the opportunity that he has to grow in his career, Onslow County, I feel like, is losing a tremendous asset in Chris. I really just, I want to take a few minutes to read a couple of accomplishments from the application that his, probably biggest fan Sandra Jansen, his assistant, and she's not an assistant, sorry Sandra, I really didn't mean to say that, but she does so much in the office there. She's going to kill me for that one. But she had submitted an application for the award he earned for Southwest Chapter of the American Association of Airport Executives, Airport Professional of the Year. I know that's a lot of words, but maybe these accomplishments will tell you what I mean by this. Chris significantly grew the annual economic impact of the airport. In 2015, the airport's economic output was 191 million, and as of 2023, it now stands at 707 million. I didn't even do what the percentage increase is for that, but that's huge. And supports jobs for an estimated 3,400 citizens. He also developed local support for and planned for the redevelopment of Onslow County's Commercial Service Airport. This program, which was completed in 2018, elevated the experience at OHA by bringing in many new services, amenities, and jobs. During the process, the airport attracted over 50 million in federal and state discretionary grants, ultimately adding over 60 million in assets to the community at no cost to the local property taxpayers. I think everybody loves that. Chris moved the Albert J. Ellis Airport from a financially negative position 14 years ago to a fully sufficient county-operated enterprise, while also generating almost 20 million annually in state and local taxes that helped to offset local property taxes. And after nearly 10 years' effort, he successfully commissioned the county's first air traffic control tower, paving the way for additional growth. He also worked with our local state representatives and NC DOT board to acquire state funding necessary to bridge the unfunded portion of air traffic control tower, which was completed in 2018. And that is just, I mean, I have pages of accomplishments here. Chris, I am so sad that you're going to go, and I personally am going to miss you, and I just wish you the greatest of all success where you go next, and Onslow County just thanks you greatly for all that you've done to invest in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Vice Chairman.
Just a few things, based on Commissioner Carpenter's comments, you can tell that we've got some great Directors here. It's pretty obvious every day. I only have one complaint to Kevin, who's our Communication Director. You need to find a camera lens that makes me look taller when you take my pictures, so I'd appreciate that, but anyway.
We can't afford that camera.
They don't make such a camera.
Okay, okay, it's my time. But we have great, we got great Directors here, and probably the best one that we've ever had is Ms. Griffin. She's leaving exactly one month from today. It's a sad time. We've got a good replacement in David Smitherman, very personable guy, very knowledgeable. This is not his first rodeo. He's a straight shooter, I was really impressed, all the Commissioners were impressed. But again, as I said before, I'm going to leave my comments towards, as we get closer to your departure date. Yeah, but know this, that you're going to be sorely missed, sorely missed by the Commissioners and your subordinates. One of the things that we need to be careful about and be on our toes with is Hurricane Lee. If you look at the spaghetti models of Hurricane Lee, and you look at the time of year, it closely resembles the year that we had Florence. The same weather pattern, the same heat pattern, the same everything, and that's a scary feeling. And I am praying and hoping that Hurricane Lee, if it gets up to a four or five, Category 4 or 5 hurricane, that it will turn northward and away from us and away from the shores of the United States, because this could be a devastating storm. So if you're not preparing, you need to prepare now. One of the things I'm looking forward to, and I want to thank Kenyatta from the NAACP, they've invited myself and my wife to speak at Monford Point on the 24th of September for their suicide awareness convention or program that they're hosting, which I think is very, 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 very important. My wife's a mental health therapist, she's very familiar with that. Being in the military and being in law enforcement, we've all experienced problems with mental health, suicide, things of that nature. And I think it's very important, we need to be focused in on that. And so we'll both be speaking at that, and I'm very excited about the opportunity to present my ideas and my thoughts, and my wife's excited to present her expertise, because she deals with this on a daily basis. So that's coming up, and I really look forward to that. Sheriff, we haven't forgot about you. I still, we still have your list, we're still going over some of those things, and we should be getting back to you shortly. So I just want you to know that, we haven't forgotten. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, you know, sometimes you come in contact with people throughout your life, and then they do the smallest things for you. They say the smallest things that mean the world, more than anything that you can purchase with money. And that happened to me before this meeting, and I don't mean to call her out, but Jennifer. Jennifer has a nephew who I knew. I've known him for probably 10 to 15 years. We met in the gym working out, and we shared some stories together, we shared our secrets together, techniques. You know, we talked about lifting, working out. I knew some things about him, and he knew some things about me. Jennifer, you came up to me and told me, thanked me how much of an influence that I had on your nephew, but to be honest with you, it's quite the opposite. He's had a tremendous, and I'm talking about Dylan, he's had a tremendous influence on me. When he came out and openly professed his faith, and he made a change in his life, and I do watch every one of his TikTok sermons. I can't be more proud of Dylan. And I've talked to him, he's called me up. What a remarkable change. And not only has that been remarkable to me, he's encouraged me. This old fuddy-duddy, he's encouraged me with his courage, his genuine love for what he's doing. And he's a testimony to a young man that kind of found his way and did 180-degree turn, and I love what I see. And I intend to get up with him, but thank you so much. Tell him how much of an influence that he's had on me, because he's a great guy, great guy. So that's, I wanted to share that with you. And the last thing, I have some people that, some of my truest loyal fans that are out there that love me to death, say that it was unprofessional of me to talk about college football. So I know who that person is. So to keep in tradition, I'm going to talk about college football, because it's an unprofessional thing to do, but it's professional to me. We get along up here, and we joke around, because that's just the way we are. We love sports. And I'm going to give it to Tim Foster. Carolina showed me something this weekend, they beat South Carolina. And then Duke upset Clemson 27 to 7, which I was ecstatic about. But I can't fail to mention my Seminoles, that they tore Louisiana up 45 to 24, and now they're ranked fourth in the country. So I'm excited about that. I'm not touching on Georgia, because that's a given, they're number one. And believe me, Ben reminds me every week who's number one. So thank you, Ben, very much. But down in the South, from August until January, or actually the end of December, this is a holiday season, and I mean football holiday. So I'll be talking about football every weekend, and for my supporter out there who thinks that I'm being unprofessional, God bless you, bless your soul. So just have a good day, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I'd like to thank Christine Pilecki, was that the name of the lady that come in and spoke to us about Possum Wood Acres and what they do out there and their need for their perimeter fencing? We appreciate her coming in. And to our folks that spoke to us about their departments and shared the great things that they are doing. Kevin Rappel in the Communications, they're telling our story. And then the Public Health, Chrissy Hoover, what a tremendous job that you do, and the time that you shared with us was just probably, just a little of what your department does. With that being said, I just would like to ask anybody that is a Director or Supervisor of anything in Onslow County sitting in the audience, just stand up real quick for me. And that's fantastic work. Thank you very much. I wanted, I want everyone to see who's in the audience, and you are the heartbeat of Onslow County. Also attended the Commissioners Conference and spoke to a lot of people. They're facing some issues and problems, some we share, some we do not. A lot that we do not share with others is that this county is sound financially, and that's because of the leadership, the leadership from the top to the leadership to each of the departments. And I wanted to, I wanted to see the department heads, the Directors that were in this room this morning. And thank you from this Board of Commissioners to the citizens of Onslow County of the job that you do, because without your effort, this county would not be as successful as it is. We would not have to, we would not have to deal with rezoning requests and housing, not enough housing. But we have to deal with that, because growth is a two-edged sword. With growth becomes wonderful things, with growth becomes more problems and responsibilities. And this industry of Onslow County, 300-plus million-dollar budget is taking care of 213,000 citizens in Onslow County. And what you accomplish, what you accomplish on a daily, daily effort does not go unnoticed. So here's to you, and thank you for making Onslow County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. With that being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.